Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Very honored to be the first presenter in our new facility. Hopefully I'll set the bar very high for others to follow. Like Dr. Jerosky mentioned, I will provide an overview of each of our choice programs and then I'll have Ms. Underwood and Ms. Morgan present some data for a couple of our programs that have some quantitative measures as well. So, just as an overview, we have several elementary programs that are open to our students for choice options: accelerated studies, arts integration, inquiry, language immersion for both French and Spanish, Montessori, IB for PYP, our primary years program, and STEAM for elementary, and then our secondary programs include IB for middle years, STEAM, and then our high school has, also has a STEAM program. The information that will be provided and outlined will include information to overview each program, some of the measures of success that each school has decided upon to gauge their progress and their success, as well as enrollment information and acceptance information for our recent choice application process. So, we'll begin with accelerated studies. Our accelerated studies program, an elementary program, is a whole school program for grades K through 5 with homogeneous grouping for students in grades 3 through 5 who've been identified as gifted and talented, state identification for gifted and talented. This program offers a rigorous accelerated curriculum, and all of our GT teachers, all of the teachers at that site are GT endorsed, those serving the non-GT students as well as those serving the GT students at that site. Some of the measures of success that have been identified for that program are the enrollment numbers, ELA and math scores for the SC Ready Assessment in comparison to the district mean, as well as the number of Duke TIP qualifiers. Additionally, this school has identified, most recently, the creation of curriculum maps for their students as one of their measures of success as well, so that is a work in progress that we will begin this summer in creating those maps for those students. Based on the recent application process, we were able to offer slots to 42 students. There are 24 students currently on the waitlist for that program. We'll have Ms. Morgan and Ms. Underwood share some information, some data regards to accelerated studies.
Can I add a question please?
Sure.
Could you help me out a little bit?
Yes, ma'am.
Give me the, I see the acronym PYP.
Yes, ma'am.
IB what PYP?
Primary Years Program for International Baccalaureate.
Okay, and MYB?
NYPD is Middle Years Program. So, your PYP program is the elementary program, and NYPD is the program located on the middle school site.
And the elementary is at Rosewood?
Mm-hmm.
And the middle is at Sullivan Middle?
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
For the accelerated studies program, we wanted to provide a comparison of those students in the homogeneous 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade GT classrooms in the accelerated studies program to other similar GT students at non-choice schools. So, we created a matched dataset to identify who those similar students were, matching students based on their demographic characteristics. So, matching them based on grade level, race ethnicity, special education status, ESOL status, GT status being an important factor as well. So, that allows us to have two very comparable groups, one of which is the accelerated studies students, and then the others are those in traditional classrooms at our non-choice schools. So, when we look at our MAP data for those students, more students in the accelerated studies program met their growth target in both math and reading. And if you'll recall from our MAP conversations, their growth targets are identified by the average growth shown by students in the same grade level with that same starting achievement level. So, it's the average growth shown for those students. So, in math, we had 66% of students in the accelerated studies program meet their growth target, and 58% in ELA. When looking at the growth index for these students in the accelerated studies program and that similar GT comparison group, the growth index is the difference of the students' observed growth and their projected growth. So, anything over zero would indicate that they exceeded their growth expectation, below zero would indicate that they missed that growth target. But we can see for our accelerated study students, those that met their growth projection had a higher growth index than GT students in our non-choice schools. Yes, ma'am?
Your measure of success, however, was ELA and math scores and SC Ready compared to the district mean. Did you give us those scores too?
I do not have-
Or so number of Duke TIP qualifiers? How did you do on that score?
Yes, ma'am, I do not have that information on hand.
But that was one of your measures. It's not available yet?
I do not have it, but Dr. White has that information. We could also follow up with you in a hotline on that.
Dr. White, if you had that information, it should be great if you would-
I have the Duke TIP.
That'd be great.
I just have that, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
The Duke TIP qualifiers, this most previous session, we had 37; the year before, we had 34.
Little bit. A little bit. But you don't know the math, the ELA stuff?
No, ma'am, not off the top of my head.
We do have student performance on SC Ready as the next slide that we'll share with you. It is not the scale score mean for that, but that is something that we could follow up with you on.
And it's one of your measures of success that would seem important.
Yes, I agree. With regard to MAP achievement, the bar charts at the bottom of the slide show the percent of students at the highest achievement category, so the 67th percentile and above, the students in the average performance category, so 34th to 66th, and then those students in the lowest performance category, which would be that light blue. When we look at our accelerated studies students compared to similar GT students in non-choice schools, there is a higher percentage of students in that highest performance category for MAP achievement in both math and reading when comparing those two groups. There are also fewer students in that lowest performance category here for the students in the accelerated studies program. Yes, ma'am.
So, I have what may be the dumb question of the evening.
Why are these totals not adding up to 100?
Because the light blue bar is small enough that the labels are not showing.
Okay.
So, they do add to 100 with those values.
Okay, I see it.
Okay. Great question. I didn't want to force it because it makes it difficult to read. For the next slide, we did look at SC Ready achievement. So, here, this is a similar view to SC Ready data we've looked at with you in previous board sessions. We've got the percentage of students by achievement level in both math and reading. The top bars are going to be those accelerated studies students compared to similar GT students in non-choice schools. So, you can see, looking at the SC Ready performance, students in the accelerated studies program exceeded their non-choice GT peers, with more students scoring exceeds expectations. There were also fewer students in the accelerated studies program who scored approaches expectations. And then for our accelerated studies program, there were no students that scored does not meet expectations in this comparison group. I will turn it back over to Dr. Holmes.
Yes, sir.
The accelerated studies students are the GT students, those who qualify. But all the teachers at the school have GT training.
All the academic teachers?
And so, how do our non-GT students at Sunset Park compare to our non-GT students in the district? Does the extra training that teachers get equate to success in the classroom? And I can tell you don't have that information, but that'd be good to look at. The other thing would be, you said that the teachers are GT endorsement. Is that the same thing as they're certified in GT or they have been trained in GT?
The state of South Carolina requires two courses, six graduate hours for the endorsement. And with the endorsement, you are eligible to teach children who have been identified gifted. There is a GT certification which requires more hours, but you don't have to have the certification to teach gifted children. Dr. Campbell may have more and better information on that.
So, all these teachers with this endorsement could teach GT at any of our schools?
Yes, yes.
We'll look at information about our arts program. This program is a whole school program for students in grades K through 5. It is a performance-based arts enrichment program, so they offer dance, drama, music, and the visual arts. They also highlight a program, an Artist in Residence program, which is one of the great features of this choice option. Their measures of success include an increase in the number of students accepted into our STARTS program, which is a summer camp for students in the arts located at Winthrop University each summer, also to increase their partnerships with organizations such as the York County Arts Council, as well as our local middle and high school arts programs. An additional measure of success is to receive, and the school has for several years received the ABC and DAP grants to fund several of their special programs. These numbers are as great as $20,000 that they receive each year to supplement each of their special programs. This year, we were able to offer slots to 39 students. There are 57 students on the waitlist for the School of the Arts.
And all of those kindergarten?
Not all kindergarten.
Not all, okay.
No, that's the total number. Our inquiry program serves students in grades 3 through 5. This is a program within a school, so that school highlights a traditional instructional program, as well as this inquiry program for grades 3 through 5. Students learn through conversation, feedback, and reflection, and are also encouraged to question and analyze. The goal of the program is to teach students to view the world through multiple perspectives. Couple measures of success for the inquiry program is the development or creation of units in science and social studies, as well as a recent added measure of success, which will be to add a parent feedback survey option as well.
There's no academic goal here?
No-
Why?
Data-related goal?
What?
I'm sorry, can you-
I mean, there is an academic goal, surely, for this program.
There is for all of our schools.
Sure, sure.
This is above and beyond what the expectation would be in my goals as it relates to student achievement in math and in Ready. This is above and beyond how do we look at these different programs.
You know, to be, I take how, which is inquiry, if they have a requirement, every student has to participate in a community project as part of the inquiry. They have to research that. I mean, and maybe that first bullet under measures says that, but it's not in plain English. I mean, to me, if my student was going there, I would expect some type of inquiry major project or whatever, but is there one? Is there a-
Is there an expectation that the students participate? Yes, each child has to participate or have to conduct their own expert learning project per semester and second semester.
And do they publish the results?
They do, within the School of the Group. They share with all the-
But each student or each group of students has to publish some work during the year?
Twice.
And, but wouldn't that be at least an expectation or a standard of the school? I mean, so-
So, we could add that as-
And I'm gonna go ahead and ask this, or I won't ask it, I'll say it. One of the things that we put in policy last year was all our schools of choice would work for certification. And of course, I've done some quick searches, and that's not necessarily easy to find, but in lieu of certification, there should be a standards of the minimum standards that would be required, which is kind of what I'm getting to. It's, and of course, you have minimum standards, and then you have measures of success. A minimum standard is not exactly the same thing as a measure of success. And so, I, you know, if you have programs that are working towards certification, it'd be good to know, because, you know, sometimes it takes a while. And I will say that when I was doing the search, one of my Montessori things says, if your school's not certified, it's not Montessori. That was one of the sites, and so, and you hadn't gotten there yet. But, and you may, you know, it's, it's important that we have some standard on our choice schools that we know that there's a minimum expectation, or our parents will know the minimum expectation, which is gonna be there, but also, as Jane's gonna ask a bunch more questions, there's an expectation that there'll be something that's measurable. Now, with arts, and I've talked to parents, the measurement is their kids have the confidence. Some of those things are unknown and not knowable. There's benefit for kids to participate in the arts, to get up in front of a group, to speak, and it gives them more courage to ask questions in class, and there's no test that'll measure that, so. But-
I think, Dr. Few mentioned it when she said, these requirements go beyond academic, but it does seem important, then, that how these students are asked to go beyond could be a little more specific than it is. And what are the goals? Why is this program? Why are we putting money in these programs if we don't have some specific ways of determining whether our success, whatever it is for inquiry, whatever it is for arts? We don't seem to have a measure for how to determine that. And then, of course, I agree with you, they've got to be academics that underlie all of it.
And then above that, I think part of it is going to a show at Northside. I mean, that is a measure. They have several shows where they are encompassing. They have their visiting artists that come in and work with students. That is above what we would do in other locations.
But for the individual students, there would be some measure too of their participation and their achievement in that. Anyway, something to think about for-
Being arts in the basic curriculum, which we are in, we are an ABC official site.
Yes.
We are, and the basic curriculum, so our measure then would be, like, through our school renewal plan, would be increase in our F and P scores, and our MAP scores, and our SC Ready scores. So, we would hope that arts in the basic curriculum increases their academic scores, but that is an expectation of Rockville School, so it's in our school renewal plan.
Maybe a little more specific about what we're getting.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm trying to make some of the scores are not as well, like, on the inquiry met growth projection, only 24% MAP growth in math versus over 50% for the traditional student. And we had a higher percentage of low-achieving students on the MAP for the math inquiry.
Yes, ma'am, and the student achievement is a, kind of like Dr. Few said, is a goal for all of our schools beyond the choice options. It's a topic that we are definitely working to address and working to grow in, especially in the areas of math and science for all of our programs.
May I ask?
Yes, ma'am.
If there is a considerable number of students waiting to be included in the programs that you have outlined, what alternative do we have? Should we provide more classrooms with teachers in them? Or what do we, how are we going to address those?
Okay, well, I'll speak to where we are currently. We do have a waiting list for what we call first choice. So, we offered slots to students, that we could offer slots to based on what our schools could accommodate. We have had a period where those students can accept or decline that offer. After that period ends, which it has ended, we will then offer slots to parents who are interested in their second choice option, meaning that if you are currently on the waiting list, you're only on the waiting list for which you selected as your first choice. Then we go back and we look at what other slots we have available in the other programs to attempt to fill those. If that makes sense. So, right now, we've only, all of those individuals on the waitlist are waitlisted for their first choice, meaning they didn't get their first choice, but we're looking at offering them the second choice.
And ask programs to become very popular?
And it happens in all places where there's choice. There's typically a waiting list. There's a school in Greenville that the parents used to spend the night, a couple of nights, because it was kind of a first come, first served, and they didn't get it. So, the good news is that we've got some very popular choice programs that people want to get into. The bad news is that because we have so many people that want to get into some of the choice programs, we don't have physical room, and that's one of the issues at Northside is the room. Y'all do know that we have looked at, do we need to expand that and look at another school? But there is a cost to have an additional choice program, and we want to make sure that what we do, we do really well, and we have not felt like in the last couple of years that we could spend additional money on opening up another choice program. But that part of it for Northside is, she just doesn't have the room. If we had another classroom, it would be weird if we put that classroom and the teacher and the children.
But we also want to be sure that the children, that our choice children are competing academically with those in traditional programs.
Absolutely.
There were only a couple of the schools we look at where the choice students, I mean, one of them was, of course, accelerated, actually outperformed those who were not in the special program. So, I mean, of course, we have to look at it carefully, since we're putting quite a bit of money in the programs, we want them to not lose ground.
Right, that is right. And y'all also know that one of our goals has been to make sure that all kids have an opportunity. So, we're not putting students into an arts program based on academic performance. We are trying to make sure that wherever they are in the district, that we give them the opportunity to participate. And so, with that, we have kids that might have excelled and others who may not, and our goal is to work with all kids academically, and then above and beyond that, how do we integrate the arts in some of our other programs?
Yeah, I was thinking-
So, this does mimic the other data that we have with math and ELA that we're working really hard to improve.
I do think, though, what Dr. Sharp is hinting at, and I kind of feel the same way, is that when we look at some of these data, you know, there is a significant difference. It's not just a percentage point of 1 or 2%. In some of the instances, we're talking upwards of 20% difference. So, I guess my question when I look at it is, you know, where it says, compared to similar students in traditional classrooms, exactly what variables were taken into account? Because it's hard when, you know, all we have is that statement. Are we talking about demographics? Are we talking about socioeconomic situations? Are we talking about, you know, what exactly went into that differentiation? And-
I know we did a match set. Do you want to, but do you mind coming and talking through the microphone so they can hear you? What that looked like when you did your match set for the data?
As with the accelerated studies program, for each of the choice program data reviews, we created a matched dataset, two students, similar students in non-choice programs. So, for each of the programs, we matched on grade level, race ethnicity, special education status, ESOL status, free and reduced lunch status. For the accelerated studies program, of course, we included GT status for those students. And so, ensuring that the choice program students are being compared to other similar students with factors that we know typically do influence academic achievement. So, we wanted to make sure that they were a comparable comparison outside of students at other choice schools. So, that's how we created those matched sets, and that's true for each of those data sets for the individual programs.
And I think I understood from your answer that they were not necessarily matched to students at the same schools? Are they, are at the same schools?
They may be, but they may also not be at the same school. So, just similar students in non-choice programs.
And the demographics you chose?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
How did you choose, how did we decide which ones would be considered and which ones would not? What students-
In the data or in the choice program?
In the choice program.
Okay.
And I will let Dr. Holmes, but we offer our choice to all of our students, and then there is a random way in which we select those who get to attend.
Correct. So, we look at the number of slots that we're able to offer, compare that to the number of applicants. In areas where we're able to accommodate the number of applicants, we go ahead and fill those slots. In cases where we have more applicants than slots, a random lottery is conducted, and Ms. Morgan actually conducts our lottery for us.
Okay. All right.
In our inquiry program, we were able to offer slots to all 63 applicants for that program, so we have zero students on the waitlist for that program. For our language immersion program, which includes French and Spanish, we have a program within a school for grades K through 5. Our immersion program begins in kindergarten. In that program, instruction is offered in the target language for 50% of the day, and then the other 50% students receive instruction in English. Our math, science, literacy development courses or work is done in the target language of French or Spanish. Goals for that particular program are just increased improvement on the Apple Language Assessment. I believe you have data in the packet in regards to the Apple Language Assessment. For the recent application process, we were able to offer 100 slots to students for Spanish and 11 for French. We have 83 students waitlisted for Spanish, and that includes grades K through 5. We have zero students waitlisted for French. We have several students before, we have several students who are, who have selected to choice into the French program as a second choice, but those slots have not yet been offered.
Clarification?
Yes.
I was under the assumption that we only admit students into the immersion program starting kindergarten?
We allow students to test in after kindergarten.
Okay.
So, the application process is for, so these numbers reflect kindergarten. They do not reflect the number of students who we will allow to test in in grades 1 through 5.
So, the test is given in the fall and then it is for the language?
The Apple test.
For the applicants, everything?
We have given this assessment for two years. It has, we have typically given it in the spring, and it's given once a year. When we look at the Utah model, however, we have seen some recommendations that we change that to the fall, but still give it annually. But to answer your question, yes, we do give it once a year, and we give it in the spring.
Okay.
For the last two years, that's what we have done. And that measures listening, speaking, and writing. And different grades can be tested in different portions of that. We have given all three parts to all of our students, and we could not begin to give that until they were in 3rd grade. So, for the first several years of the program, we didn't give the assessment. It was not developmentally appropriate.
So, when, those who test in, they're taking another, they're not taking this language assessment test, they're taking another one?
They're taking a proficiency assessment.
Just proficiency for entering, sort of?
Yes.
Good afternoon. I will be going through some of the Apple data points for you today. Like Dr. Jerosky said, the Apple assessment assesses interpersonal speaking, interpretive reading, interpretive listening, and presentational writing. All of the tasks are set either to a novice, intermediate, or advanced level. There are two forms of the assessment. Form A covers students who would be in the novice or intermediate levels, and Form B is students who are intermediate or advanced. All of our students took Form A, so they could either receive a novice level or an intermediate level on the assessment. intermediate level on the assessment. To start, we've got a Spanish cohort. We divided the students based on the number of years of instruction that they have received so far. So, this first group is students who started the program in the 2012, 2013 school year as kindergartners in Spanish. In third grade, they had had four years of instruction, and in fourth grade, they had had five years of instruction. So, the 2016 columns that you see, that's after four years of instruction, 2017 is five years of instruction. In all areas of instruction, except for listening, we'll scoot you back, students shown, students showed gains from novice to intermediate. In speaking, reading, and writing, those gains were around 20% between the two school years. In 2015, 2016, nearly 6% of students were rated as below novice in speaking. In the 2016, 2017 school year, that number was at zero, which is great. In listening, 1.18% of students were rated below novice, and in 2016, 2017, that was also at zero. And then in writing, that category also dropped by three percentage points from around 6% to about 2.5%. Yes?
I was looking at this and wondering, the ones that were below novice, and then in fourth grade were better scores, but were we working with those students, or did we have any students drop out? Because I know we did have students drop out sometimes.
The N size did change, but just by a, a very small number. For Spanish, for this cohort, in 1516, the N size was 91 students, and then in 1617, it dropped to 89 students. I can't speak to what sort of programming they received, or what sort of supports they received, but perhaps someone else can.
Well, one thing, and I know, Dr. Drowski, you certainly feel free to answer, is it's another year of instruction in the language for them. So, hopefully, as they're continuing in the language, then, then their speaking and listening's going to also improve.
I'm just wondering if those students and families are frustrated and end up leaving the program?
The, the students you see in 2016 and in 2017 continued the program, and as she said, there was a small drop in numbers.
Two, two students.
Two students. Did we answer your question?
Kind of. I'm just wondering if the two students that dropped out were just a random two students, or if they were the two students that were below proficiency and, you know?
We would have to look into that, I'm not sure we can answer.
If I could, if I could add, probably for those students who went from the below novice down, or, or that number dissipated, one of the things that we saw in the first testing was test formatting. I mean, our kids took a very new, different kind of test, unlike anything they'd taken before. And so, one of the, the, the things that, that was just a huge difference from, for those below novice kids, were really coming back in fourth grade and understanding literally how to take the test, and even for our teachers, understanding how to administer the test. So, I would attribute that drop in the, the below novice moving into novice to be test familiarity and, and that kind of thing. It's not unusual, for example, the overall number of third graders to fourth graders, we're going to lose one or two every year, maybe even, even three or four, just due to families moving out of town. So, that would be my guess.
I don't want to take time, but we do, because we have a few minutes. Describe the nature of that test. Is it orally given? Is it written? Is it, do the teachers give it? Does it during the day?
That, that's a great question.
Have you given it yet?
I have only observed from afar, which-
No, but I mean, when is the spring test given?
The spring test, as you would imagine, Dr. Sharp, is the very last test that we give.
Okay, good.
And, and I'm not, not saying that's right or wrong, but by the time for those third and fourth graders that we administer that, they have already taken ESE-ready, ESE-pass, MAP, and then this is the last, last one. And Dr. Drowski mentioned there may be some value to doing that in the fall.
Yeah.
I think most of us would be proponents of that, because by this particular point-
But do the inclusion teachers give it individually to their students?
There are part, first of all, it is all computerized, the, the teachers do no scoring of the test.
Yes.
Obviously, for the listening portion, they have headphones on, they're listening to questions that they're being asked, they're responding on the computer, again, which is kind of a, a little bit different format than what they're used to. On the speaking part, they literally have microphones that they are using to produce language and be able to explain things that they're supposed to do. And then, an outside assessor for the company is the one who rates the kids and, and determines their level of proficiency. Reading and writing are very similar to what would be on a MAP test, ESE-ready, anything like that. So, but it's a lot of navigating to make sure all of your technology is working correctly, which ours does. But given the, the test formatting and given just the, the differences, our teachers really had to work very hard to make sure the first year, but especially into the second year, it was a really good test administration. So, we're battling some of that with a new and different kind of test.
Okay, thank you, Pat.
If Mr. Jones were here, our world language coordinator, who's a new father, by the way, which is why he's not here, he, he would share with you that, and I'm learning this myself, one year of immersion instruction does not necessarily equate to a child moving from one category to the next on this assessment. There, there's a range within each of these categories. So, if you go from below novice to novice one year, that, that might be appropriate, but in one year, you may not go from novice to intermediate necessarily. So, it's not a year-to-year equation. Therefore, we could give this assessment in the fall, which is what Utah does, to avoid so much testing at one time of the year.
Well, I was getting ready to ask Pat if I could take you to the test with a kindergarten, but I'm afraid I'd come out below novice, and so-
Oh, no.
So, I don't think I'm going to do that.
We would welcome you to come take the test.
Yeah, think of it. Mrs. Sharp failed the test.
I'm, I'm hoping that the, when the person is speaking the language, that the, the speaker is, has an accent that the students would recognize, and the appropriate, I don't know how to say this, but how, when one person says something in Spanish and another person says the same thing, it sounds different. Is that the kind of thing that you're considering when testing is being given using a microphone or something that is, is taped? And the rate of the speaking is also important, I think.
You, you've asked really a great question, and one of the things that we have in our program to, to try to give balance in the kind of speakers that, and teachers we have. Our teachers, and, and I think French is the same way, but we have teachers from France as well as American teachers who, who have learned French at a very high proficiency level. Some have studied in Canada, some have studied in France. On the Spanish side, which is the one that certainly I'm more familiar with, we have teachers directly from Spain as well as Central and South America. So, what is true in the testing format, and, and again, I, I really know better the Spanish part, on the testing side of it, it really shouldn't matter for our kids whether the test giver, who is speaking and they're doing the listening part, if they're from Spain, if they're from Central America, if they're from South America, our students should be able to have enough background from teachers who come from many different countries to be able to be successful.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, we're going to move on to the French cohort. This group of students started the program in the 2013, 2014 school year as first graders. So, for the 2016 column that you see for third grade, they'd have three years of instruction, and for the 2017 column, four years of instruction. The 1516 N size was 32 students, and the 1617 N size was 27 students. Those are five student difference in these two groups. The percent of students rated intermediate increased in every area, ranging from a 20-point jump in listening to a less than one-point jump in writing. The percent of students who achieved below novice increased in every instructional area except for writing, which showed a decrease of almost 20 percentage points.
Yes. So, I have a question. When we compare these data points versus the ones for Spanish, there is a difference, obviously. So, my question to either you or Dr. Holmes, or whoever can answer me, would be, is that because we have more native speakers in the Spanish cohort than we have in the French cohort?
I, I think that there are a number of factors that might impact these data. I think we do have more native Spanish speakers in our district than we have French in the first place. I also think it's important for you to note that the French program has had a lot more teacher turnover than the Spanish, and we've also had some administrative turnover in some of these schools. So, I'm guessing there could be a number of different factors that would impact these data.
Absolutely. I, I was just curious, because obviously, you know, two similar programs and the data points are looking very differently.
Right.
So, that, that's where my line of questioning is coming from. So, thank you.
And finally, we've got a combined cohort. These are students who started the immersion program in the 2013, 2014 school year as kindergartners. So, in the 2017 administration of the Apple Assessment, they were in the third grade, so we only have one year of data for this group of students. Their N size combined is 108 students. Thirty-one of those were in the French program and 77 in the Spanish program. In listening and speaking, more than 50% of students were rated as intermediate. In reading, three-fourths of the students were rated as novice, and in, and two-thirds in writing were rated, rated as novice. In listening, speaking, and reading, less than 1% of students were rated below novice, while nearly 13% of students in writing were rated as below novice. Thank you.
With our Montessori program, we have a whole school program for K through two, although this is a, a pre, a three-year-old through second-grade program. Our choice options are for K through two. It is based on student choice and a hands-on discovery model, and all of the teachers in this program are also trained in delivering Montessori instruction. The measures of success for this program include the South Carolina Montessori validation, which this school is currently working towards, as well as the American Montessori Society validation, an additional point toward which this school is working. 100% of the teachers are Montessori credentialed, are working on, working towards Montessori credentialing. They're also looking at an increased growth as evidenced by the Montessori walkthrough rubric. And Ms. Jones could probably speak more to that Montessori walkthrough rubric as well. This year, we were able to offer 77 student slots at the Montessori school, and two students are on the waitlist.
Is there a cutoff for attending? Do you have to, would you take a second grader without any Montessori schooling?
She would, but I think she would prefer not to. Yes.
At this point in time, we are full, so we do have that waiting list for all levels, but if someone were to come and it were to be outside of the window, if Dr. Holmes were to come to me, we had available space, and depending on circumstances, we could, we could take them if you want.
Does that number include the three and four-year-olds? That, that is only kindergarten through second, so-
That's just your choice.
We also have three and four-year-olds that are tuition-based.
Correct.
And then we give scholarships.
Correct.
I do believe that Montessori philosophically and programmatically would say they prefer for children to start as early as possible in that program and not just to enter in third grade, for example. You, you will remember, we had this program through grade five at one time, and there were students coming in and out of that program that might not have started in early childhood. But if you know anything about the, the classroom and the training and the expectations of the students, they like to teach them very early those skills and behaviors. And, and I don't mean to speak for Ms. Jones, but it is more difficult for a child to just pop into that program and, and do as well as some others.
Don't misunderstand my question, I'm not advocating taking them, I just- I would be surprised if Montessori would give the certification if they knew you were taking a lot of students in hit the upper grades, because, I mean, so I, maybe that was a trick question, but, but, but don't, but don't interpret my question as saying we should be taking those students.
And just as a reminder to the board, the second graders have first choice to go to the inquiry program at Ebenezer Avenue, and then anybody else that wants to choice in after that, they are able to do that, but we made that decision when we stopped Montessori at the second grade.
So, you said that all the students have to be regular academics. What are some of the things that a walkthrough would, would show us if we took a guided tour?
And Ms. Jones, do you mind coming and speaking into the microphone and just share with them about the rubric?
What would be increased growth evidenced by Montessori walkthrough rubric?
So, one of the things that I was able to do, we have in the district a walkthrough program called Classroom Mosaic. So, I was able to work with the gentleman that created the program to come up with a rubric that could be used for me to observe Montessori instruction. And I was able to gather the information from the State Department of Education. They have a list of what you would call walkthrough expectations that you would expect to see occurring in a classroom, and they're broken up into the classroom environment, classroom climate, prepared environment, what the students are doing, what the teacher is doing, as well as what the assistant is doing. And under each one of those, there are criteria that are expected to be seen during that time. And so, when I go through the classrooms for observations, I do the literacy walkthrough, I do the adept walkthrough, but most frequently, I use our Montessori walkthrough, and that gives my teachers and assistants right there, hands-on data on what I'm noticing and observing, and if I have questions, I can also indicate that in my Classroom Mosaic response to the teacher and assistant.
Give me one example of specifics.
Of a specific-
Specific behavior that you've been looking for?
One of them is that the students are aware of expectations and procedures, and they are working peacefully, and they call it kid buzzing, and there's a peaceful flow in the classroom. Those are some of the things that the students would be expected to show. Teachers would be able to show a calm sense of demeanor, a way of being able to have a constant awareness of what's taking place in the classroom, because there's a lot going on in a Montessori classroom, as you can imagine. So, we say they have to kind of have eyes all over their body to kind of see what's going on in front of them, behind them, and on the sides. And then, another thing, too, they need to be able to show good record-keeping, which is critical, because in a Montessori classroom, there are specific lessons that go in a progression of order, so they're checking off and taking anecdotal records from the students' mastery of that, as well as our state standards. So, they're having to kind of, in my opinion, double-dip, and I need to be able to see evidence of that, and that's another thing that I also check for as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I tried to make this a trick question, but when the board visited the Montessori school before deciding on putting our own Montessori in, I, I was impressed with the fact that testing, it was not in the Montessori curriculum. And, but they, they had to take the required test, and one of the things, that school, the third graders, because they weren't used to testing, usually did poorly compared to the other schools, but by, by fifth or sixth grade, they actually were up, because that was more in the curriculum. And are we true to the Montessori, or even the inquiry model where we, we're not concentrate, you know? We've gotten into this testing mode mostly defensively, you know, with the MAPS testing, I mean, our kids do all kinds of testing. But are we requiring that testing in the Montessori, or are we trying to stay, or the inquiry, or are we trying to stay to the principles of, of the Montessori and inquiry where testing is not the, the all of the school?
Got it. Well, I will-
Well, I will be honest with you and tell you that we discussed this as a group in the South Carolina Montessori Alliance. We actually went to the state and asked if we could have a reprieve on some of the assessments, and we were told that public Montessori schools had to follow the same guidelines for testing.
But what about internal assessments? That's really my, I'm not advocating not doing required testing.
Oh, okay, okay.
State didn't require anything for first and second grade.
No, not for first and second grade.
And so are we requiring our Montessori students to do all the MAPS testing and everything that all the other students are doing?
They do MAP testing, yes. That is the requirement that all our grades, kindergarten through second grade, they all MAP test.
But that is a district decision, not a state decision.
Now, now it's a state.
I was gonna say, they have to have some type of assessment. Uh-huh, yes. And so we do that, but they don't do the, like you said, the SC Ready and the SC Pass at our grade levels. They don't. But other schools in the state of South Carolina, they have to do all those assessments as well, and some of them have even adopted other assessments that were local for their district as well.
Thank you.
In the new ESSA accountability model, which they are still refining for this current year, it does require some information on kindergarten, first, and second-grade students.
Specifically, reading. The legislature wanted to make sure that we were monitoring reading because of the third-grade retention, and so that's one piece that's going to be a part of that, that has not been in the past as a public.
Right. But that because of Read to Succeed and the new accountability model, that has been added.
Yes.
How many spaces did we have open for five-year-olds that were not taken by the four-year-olds moving up?
So how many slots did we offer this year for five-year-olds?
In Montessori?
In Montessori.
I think, I want to say it was around forty or fifty?
Fifty-seven, Ms. Jones is saying, fifty-seven, all of them.
We took all the slots that were accepted.
For applicants.
We had two that were waiting, but all fifty-seven of the slots were, that were in place for kindergarten, and those were some that were four that moved up to five-k, and then some moved to five-k students that enrolled as well, read a choice. They all had to go through the choice program.
But I was just wondering how, what the difference in the number was between the ones that were four-year-olds that automatically got to go into the program, how many extra slots were available for other five-year-olds who may have wanted to come into the program who had not attended when they were four?
I haven't seen the actual list of names.
We could get that for you, though.
Okay.
I have to show that we have, this fall, currently, we had thirty-five four-year-olds that, yeah, thirty-five four-year-olds that were enrolled in, it's five-k for the upcoming year, so thirty-five minus fifty-seven, that's how many additional slots for the four-k.
Thank you.
Okay, our primary years program for IB is a whole school program, grades K through five.
I would say, in the interest of time, let's draw the line here and take this up at the next work session.
Okay.
Good questions, good information, but it's been an hour.
Sorry.
It feels much longer, doesn't it? All right, we will break for thirty minutes, and somebody needs to tell us where to go and how to get there.
We are gonna go right next door and just go right out the hall.
Welcome back to our April work session. It is now my pleasure to introduce Brishawn McLeod Feaster, an eighth grader at Saluda Trail Middle School, who will provide our call to order.
Good evening, Mr. Riley. Members of the Board, Superintendent Pugh, ladies and gentlemen of the audience, I'm Brishawn McLeod Feaster, an eighth grader at Saluda Trail Middle School. I am honored to represent Saluda Trail Middle School and to bring greetings from our principal, Ms. Cox, and the faculty and staff of Saluda Trail Middle School. Please stand with me at this time and remain standing for a moment of silence and then for the pledge allegiance. Now for the pledge allegiance. The flag is outside, so. Now for the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may now be seated. It is now my pleasure to tell you about my experience at Saluda Trail Middle School. From sixth grade, I was unsure of what my future would look like and also unsure myself. I was a shy girl that was just going into a whole different life during the day. But through the years of being at Saluda Trail, teachers and staff have made me grow more confident of myself and of my decisions. When I was in sixth grade, I was just in advanced math, but now I am in Algebra I. And in seventh grade, that's when I made the decision of going up to a higher level. And now, I love math, and I'm proud that I tried something at a higher level. Also, in Saluda Trail, we have a science fair and National History Day. This challenged me, because in class, we would have core classes. In one class, I would be a scientist, a mathematician, but in the other class, I'd be a historian in just two different hours. Saluda Trail always does a PBL project. A PBL is project-based learning, and my favorite PBL project was the one that eighth grade just finished up, and it was talking about modern-day slavery. And each student in a group had to make a public service announcement, website, or write a letter to the legislator. But also, in each of their projects, they had to put an opposing view side of their presentation. For me, this was difficult, but at the same time, I had not to look on the wrong side forever. I had to figure out why did they do this and how. PBLs like this make me wonder all the time about my society and my community. For me, yeah. In wonder all the time, in these, in Saluda Trail, I had amazing related arts, and I was in three of them: band, chorus, and drama. In sixth grade, I did band because I wanted to see how music actually works and how it was made. In seventh grade, that was my highlighted year, I was in chorus, and I loved it. Last, but certainly not least, in eighth grade, last semester, I enrolled in drama. I didn't think I would like drama at first, and I was counted as a newbie in class, because everyone in there at least took their drama last year or the year before that in the three years that they've been there. I was scared, so our teacher finally picked a play, and we did a funny version of Romeo and Juliet. And I got the part of Juliet. I was so excited, and I was just curious of how I would be, but it just amazed me of how I can play different parts in a matter of minutes, in different roles, and trying to see how I can be. Okay, this is gonna make me cry, okay. Last but not least, I was in a group from sixth grade until eighth grade, and I am hopefully pursuing in high school, and that was student council. In sixth grade, I was home-based representative; in seventh grade, I was vice president; in eighth grade, I'm now president. When I was in seventh grade, I had a little bit of doubt of the way I was gonna be doing in the eighth grade. I didn't know if I was gonna be in president. But the former president, Katia, she came to me and told me that I have a certain passion and commitment for student council, so I pursued it. And when she told me that, I had started having confidence in going on with my decision and to keep on going to the president's spot. Saluda Trail is not only a steam school, it's a friendly-based school. For the past three years, I felt a bond with teachers and also students, and I also think of Saluda Trail a big, happy, sometimes hectic, family. Thank you for inviting me to represent Saluda Trail Middle School.
Now, Brishawn told me that she was really nervous, but I think she was misrepresenting herself when she said she was. But she's student body president, she's a cheerleader, she's a member of the Jims Club Girls in Engineering and Mathematics. She has a twin sister, Brishawn, who also goes to Saluda Trail, and she has two older brothers who are out of high school, Devion and Michael. And her principal is Ms. Cox in the back, and I'll open it up to any questions.
Okay, are you ready for me?
Oh, what?
Ready for me?
Yeah, I'm ready, I'm ready.
Yeah, so you are very excited and everything. Tell me, what did you have to do to become a student ambassador?
For student ambassador, for the application, I had to write an essay about why I wanted to be an ambassador, and I had to put in my grades, and my grades were pretty good. They had some As, some Bs, and I think it was like one C, but I had to put in my grades, I had to put in an essay about why I wanted to be an ambassador, why is ambassador important to me.
Now that you're in the eighth grade and you're gonna look forward to going to high school, what is one thing you can tell your principal that needs to be changed?
Wow, that's a, that's a great, okay. One thing that needed to be changed? I would say nothing. I mean, from my experience, I love Saluda Trail, so I wouldn't want to change anything about it. I love the steam base, and I love everything that I did in my three years into being at Saluda Trail.
Okay, thank you.
Talk just a little bit about Jims, Girls in Engineering and Math. What kind of activities do you take part in?
So one activity that they did was that they had to hook up, kind of like, we go with our science teachers and our math teachers, and we try to figure out the engineering base of girls and stuff, and we try to build cars and try to motor stuff and batteries. It includes all that type of engineering stuff, and so, yeah.
Are you interested in a career there?
I am, I really am, being engineer, mechanic, somewhere around that, but if I can't do that, I'll just go into a teacher-based stuff.
Elena.
So you're going to South Point?
Yes.
This, this fall, and I have an eighth grader myself, so I know that you have just picked out all your classes and you're all ready for it. So tell me, you talked about related arts and all the things that you've enjoyed. Are you continuing drama or are you picking something different? What did you do? I'm curious. What's your track? What's, what's your first year at South Point gonna look like?
So, this is exciting.
Awesome.
So, I actually didn't go into drama next year, or chorus, or any of that. I'm actually going into AFJROTC next year, because that just really got to me, and I'm doing Spanish next year, so, yeah.
Good for you.
Thank you.
So do I understand right that you were a Montessori student?
Yes.
So tell me how you liked that and how you felt the transition from Montessori to the regular classroom went for you.
Okay, so from Montessori to like Saluda Trail, there are two, they, I was kind of confused, because they were like two special schools, and I was like, oh, wait. And then in the Montessori school, you know, we had like teachers that'll teach us, but in Saluda Trail, it was just all about, like I said, steam. And I was like, yes, finally something that I can like get into. And in Montessori school, that was kind of fun for me, too, because it also had like a little bit of steam in there, but it didn't, but when I went to Saluda Trail, they had all the steam, so I really liked that.
Anne.
Hi.
When you talk, you talk with your body and your legs and your face and everything, and I'm just smiling, but I'm so impressed with your presentation.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask. One has to do with the project that you just finished working on, and you said that you were gonna, it had to do with, what, slavery?
Modern-day slavery.
I can't, did you learn anything from?
I did. So when we had, so our associate teacher, he gave us like a few subjects that we, stuff that we can do, and I wrote a letter to the legislator, and in, like I said, I had to appoint the opposing view, and I figured out that they do it because of economic reasons and because they want money. They say like the clothes that we have on, that slaves made, make it, and now when I go up to clothes and it's ain't made in China, I'm like, wait, what? Because I just figured, I just take a second to realize that some slaves can be making the clothes that we have on today, the shoes, our jeans, and everything. That's just amazing, that's what I learned, that everyday items can be made by modern-day slavery.
Very good. Thank you. I have a second question that I'd like to ask, too. You have been in some, some very exciting things. You've told me that, well, you've told us that you have been a part of the band, sung in the chorus, and you've also been in some of the theatrical performances at Saluda Trails. And I'm surprised that you didn't choose to continue with those things this year, but that's, that's okay.
Because I had to go with, I wanted to, like, my plan was to finish my credits in my freshman and junior year, so I can like, do like all that kind of fun stuff in like the later years that I'm in high school, so I can just have those, like, that year off and have like all that type of fun stuff into my life, so, yeah.
I think you could sort of handle it, though, because you could, I think you could handle some of it while you're going through, through high school. Finally, I'd like to ask you one other question, and that is, of all of the teachers that you've had, were they all as excited to be teaching as you are to be a listener and a learner?
Be political now.
Actually, like, when I went into like a sixth grade through eighth grade, I had some wonderful teachers, wonderful, and I would just look, I would sometimes look back and like, wow, they were here when I was in sixth grade, they were here, because they weren't just only teachers to me, they were like my, like my mom's friends or my god-moms, my god, that, like, it was just something else, that connection, and I just, that was just done in like a year, and they just, it felt like I was open to them, kind of a little bit. So all of them was wonderful. I don't have like a particular teacher that I don't like, so.
That's good. I hope you will be a teacher one day, too.
Thank you.
Just a, just a comment to you, Brishawn, really just echoing what Ms. Reed said. You are a great ambassador for Saluda Trail, very polished, you have done very, very well, and I know you've made Ms. Cox very proud and your family proud in your presentation, so great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brishawn. Next up, I need a motion to go into executive session for receipt of legal advice regarding policies, personnel matters, hirings, contract recommendations, and discussion of employment matters regarding the superintendent. Moved by Wendy Cole, seconded by Helena Miller. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. My apologies to the Holly folks, we'll be as quick as we can, so we'll be right back. I entertain a motion to exit executive session and enter open session. Moved by Helena Miller, seconded by Wendy Cole. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. All right, Dr. Sharp, you have a motion?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendations regarding the reemployment of professional certified teachers and administrators for the 2018-19 school year as set forth in the employment recommendations list.
Second was Anne Reed. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. All right, next up, I got a comment that, since our last regular scheduled meeting, Dr. Pugh has asked to be relieved from her contract, which we did on March 30th, after I had argued that she shouldn't be doing this and stay in the district. I want everyone to know that she's leaving on, on good terms with the board. I think the board was surprised and disappointed that she's leaving, but I want to make sure everyone's clear that, that the board's on good terms. I've had a lot of people talk to me about running for my position, and I've always told them that the hardest thing any board does is finding a superintendent. It's also the most important job that any board has got, and I want to thank the board now for being diligent and, and, and working on this. And I wanna thank the board now, um, for being diligent and, 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 and working on this. Uh, the board has decided not to do a search. We, we identified a very small list of candidates, and we have interviewed one, and we're ready to, uh, move forward. Uh, this candidate has been in, in education over thirty years. Ten years as elementary, uh, principal. Um, five of those years in a high poverty school, uh, where he was recognized for outstanding academic achievement. Six years as a principal of a startup school, uh, which ended up being the best in the state. Uh, he has experienced implementing choice programs. Um, he's worked at just about every level in education. When, um, one of his references, several references, what a principal said, uh, this person is administrator who is a principal's administrator. Uh, the superintendent said, um, he is the supervisor I would like to have, and the leader, the school leader that I would like for my children to be in. And on top of all that, he, uh, is working for a pretty good district. So I'll now entertain a motion, uh, uh, is there a motion on the floor, Terry?
I move that we authorize the board chairman to execute an employment contract with Dr. William Cook as superintendent of Rock Hill School District Three, effective July 1, 2018. Said contract having been prepared by the district attorney and re- reviewed by all of the Rock Hill School District Three's Board of Trustees and provided, providing for a four-year term of employment through June 30th, 2022, at an annual salary of a hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred dollars. I further move that Dr. Cook be named as superintendent-elect, effe- effective April 10, 2018, and that he be provided with a supplement of five thousand dollars for his duties as superintendent-elect.
Is there a second? All right, Wendy Cole was seconded, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Now I'd like to welcome Dr. Cook up as our superintendent-elect in future... Dr. Cook, if you would, uh, make a few comments?
I certainly won't be as articulate as the young lady who spoke earlier this, this evening from Salute Trail. Um, my grandmother had a famous saying, which was, "You can't thank people enough, but try." So first, I would like to say thank you to the Board of Trustees for the confidence and trust you're placing in me to serve as the superintendent of Rock Hill School District. I considered it an incredible privilege to serve as superintendent in such a positive and progressive school district in which public education is deeply valued. Since joining Rock Hill Schools in January of 2016, to serve as the Executive Director of Secondary Schools, I have had the opportunity to experience and appreciate the district's culture of excellence and the spirit of collaboration. People here truly, working together, share a student-centered philosophy. I've also had the opportunity to form many relationships in these two years, and I look forward to deepening those relationships and to building many new ones in the months and years ahead. I truly believe the depth and quality of relationships among all key stakeholders form the foundation of the important work that is to be done for our students. The progressive nature of this school district and community are represented in many ways, such as the openness to continuous improvement, innovative educational initiatives, and partnerships that provide outstanding opportunities for our students and their development. Our schools mirror this desire and help carry out the vision on a daily basis. From Montessori to STEAM, international baccalaureate to language immersion, just to name a few examples, academics are clearly a top priority. Our students also have tremendous opportunities in the arts, athletics, and extracurricular experiences. During my time in Rock Hill Schools, I've had the opportunity to work under the direction and leadership of Dr. Kelly Pugh, who I admire greatly and respect. Serving as superintendent-elect over the next three months will enable us to collaborate on many important matters that will ensure a smooth transition for all involved. We'll work on this podium. I believe that each position I've held in my thirty-one years of service in public education has helped prepare me specifically for this time and this place to serve and lead Rock Hill Schools. My personal journey has led me from my upbringing in eastern North Carolina, where influential teachers helped guide me to a career path as a business education teacher, school administrator, district director, and assistant superintendent with twenty-seven years spent in Union County, North Carolina. My background and experiences have helped me to come to appreciate both Carolinas. Having had my oldest son graduate from UNC Chapel Hill, I thought I knew the meaning of a true college rivalry, seeing UNC and Duke as a strong example of that. However, having my youngest son graduate from USC, and now experiencing South Carolina directly myself, I now see even perhaps an even better example of that between the Gamecocks and Tigers. Go Gamecocks. My wife and I look forward to relocating to Rock Hill and to fully immersing ourselves in all that is great that this community offers. My wife is also an educator, who currently serves as a high school principal about thirty minutes away in Union County, North Carolina. For both of us, our life's work has been about serving others through our roles in public schools and working to improve the lives of all children. I am truly thankful for the support that my family provides, which enables me to do the work that I am so passionate about. I look forward to working with the Board of Trustees, district and cabinet staff members, our school-based administrators, teachers and staff, parents and community, to ensure that we are truly providing a world-class education to almost eighteen thousand students. Looking to the future for Rock Hill Schools, we have important goals to pursue as we continuously improve in safety and security, student achievement, teacher recruitment and retention, organizational effectiveness and culture, and communication with all stakeholders. I will be working with our Board of Trustees to finalize and formalize our improvement goals and to ensure that our vision clearly places students first. We must be courageous in facing our challenges and improvement efforts. This is the time to move our students, our schools, and our district to the next level of excellence and effectiveness. Working together in partnership with the wider community, I am confident that we will achieve greatness in Rock Hill Schools and be one of the top-performing districts in this state. Again, thank you for this opportunity to serve. I am greatly indebted, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Lot of stuff tonight. Um, next up, we have the best part of the meeting. We got the Mount Holly, um, School Improvement Council, and we really appreciate your patience and, uh, look forward to what you have to tell us.
Sorry, I'm gonna make you dizzy. Relax. Oh, thank you. Should've put my glasses on.
Erin. TV's not on in the back for the board to see.
You guys also have slides in front of you as well.
Good evening, school board members, Dr. Pugh, district personnel, and other audience members. I had reconciled myself to the fact I would be following the young lady who spoke with us, but then to follow our new superintendent is quite an honor too. Thank you for inviting us tonight to share some information with you about our Mount Holly School Improvement Council. I am Karen Warmuth, a retired Rock Hill Schools teacher, a Mount Holly volunteer, and a community member of the School Improvement Council. Our School Improvement Council focuses on enhancing, through a variety of efforts, the educational and personal opportunities for our students at Mount Holly. Using assessment data to develop and strengthen our academic program is one component of our work as a School Improvement Council. And, like the board, we regularly monitor and use our data. It is important to use such valuable information as a guide for instructional planning. Tonight, however, we would like to focus on what some individuals call the soft skills. These are the skills that are needed by successful students, and at Mount Holly, we believe that it is important to meet the needs of the whole child. By providing such support and opportunities for our students, we enhance academic growth. Pastor Scott Carroll from Outbreak Church, one of our strongest community support groups, will share how our wonderful volunteers support Mount Holly students.
One of the highlights of student life at Mount Holly Elementary is our monthly birthday table, and we're just excited to talk about that. It happens the second Friday of each month, and students are invited to a birthday party in their honor on the stage during their lunch period, and we have volunteers who decorate the stage and serve the students. Every student receives a special attention, encouragement, free ice cream, and a filled goodie bag as a gift. And the summer months are recognized with either May or August, depending on the school calendar, so every child gets honored on their birthday and is recognized through this program. And then the second program we'd like to highlight tonight is our Reading Buddy Program. We're all aware that reading on grade level three by the time that you're in the third grade is a major factor in future success in all areas, but some of us may not be aware. Reggie McNeil, who is an author and a futurist and educational-cultural expert with the Leadership Network, states that many states use the percentage of those students who cannot read at grade level by the end of grade three to predict the number of jail cells that they'll need in the future, which is staggering. So our goal, uh, in the Reading Buddy Program at Mount Holly is that within three years, all the students in the third grade will be at or above their recommended reading level. Right now, we currently have twenty-four reading buddies, serving thirty-one first-grade students for thirty minutes each week. And the program is coordinated through Kim Simpson, the reading recovery teacher, in conjunction with Ms. Frankie Burkett, uh, Director of the Volunteers in the Reading Buddy Program. So, right now, I'd like to introduce Ms. Jody Rankin, former teacher and current volunteer, who will share the progress of our health track and our buddy benches.
Good evening. I am Jody Rankin, and I have taught school for more than forty years. I know more about a fifth grader than anybody wants to know, okay? I serve as an interventionist for the fifth grade classes at, uh, Mount Holly and love every minute that I am there. What I wanna talk to you about is the track that was constructed in 2012, 2013. It is a quarter-mile track, so the children have done a lot of math with figuring out how m- many times around, you know, four times around will make a mile. And Ms. Pig, our PE teacher, uh, several years ago started the One Hundred Mile Club. And the children could keep track of their twenty-five mile, uh, place, their fifty, their seventy-five, and their hundred. Now, I am still on my first twenty-five, but I'm going to continue, and I have not worn this shirt yet, because I'm not going to cheat. Anyway, a lot of our teachers have taken part in this, and we still have many plaques in our school of the children who have, uh, achieved this prestigious challenge. We have many teachers who have done this as well. We do stress math as well as honesty. All right, the next one, the crows. Oh, there they are. Now, these are some of our first neighbors. We had five crows who came to, uh, the school after it was built. And if you have not been to visit Mount Holly, it is just one of the most pastoral, uh, places you could be. And these five crows, uh, were fed by Ms. Ham, our art teacher. And she showed me one time, you know, a crow is one of the, uh, smartest birds there is, and they make tools, and they're really problem solvers. Well, one day, she put some graham crackers out on the ledge of her, uh, of this wall right outside of her classroom, and she said, "Now, Jody, I want you to watch what those crows do." And this one crow picked them up, just like a, a steam shovel or a, a thing, and then flew off with them. And I had, um, a first-grade class, and sometimes we would just drop what we were doing. It was a reading class, and I'd say, "Let's go take a walk on our, on the track." And we could spot those crows out in the treetops. And Ms. Ham even came in the summer to feed them, because they didn't know the school calendar and that we don't need, so, okay. Yes, ma'am?
I have two crows who eat every cone of, of suet I put out. If I created them out, could I bring them down to Mount Holly?
Absolutely. Listen, everybody is welcome at Mount Holly. I don't care who they are or what they are. But anyway, these are our five crows. And then, we have National Walk at School Day. We can't say walk to school, 'cause nobody walks to Mount Holly, but we walk at school, and then the School Improvement Council and our PTO furnish healthy snacks, and we have wonderful music, thanks to Mrs. Sloan. So many of the things involved with the track, we try to encompass the, all of our children, all of our faculty, 'cause that's what it's all about, and they just love the Walk at School Day. One of our big highlights at our school is the Veterans Day Parade. And for several years, we had it on the track. Now we've had so many people, and, uh, Pastor Scott furnishes the music for it, and we're now on our parking lot area. But, uh, the children, you know, have always loved that, and relatives. We invite so many people who come to the Veterans Day Parade. And one particular day, the Veterans Day Parade in 2015, uh, every year, we have the Raptor Center come to speak with our second graders and our fourth graders, 'cause it's part of the curriculum. Well, wha- this particular year, we had paid for, uh, the release of a bird, and on Veterans Day, I got a call saying, "We have a bird ready for you." It had been hospitalized for eighty-five days. Uh, there, there he is. He was a red-tailed hawk, and he was trying to recover from a gunshot wound. And when he came, the, we had hundreds of people in the back and all around that track. You could hear a pin drop, because the Raptor Center, uh, came after we were all positioned. And when they opened that cage, it was so thrilling to see it fly around. It flew around the playground and landed in a tree. And do you know it stayed? It is still sighted at our school. And the Raptor Center, uh, told me that often, this is the case, when they are freed to go into their own habitat, they stay where they're left. And hey, he has a permanent home. I don't know what grade he's in. But anyway, our next project, what we are taking under advisement now, I don't know how many benches we, we in a deciding mode at the, at the moment of how many benches we're going to put around the track for our reading buddies and for our special-needs children. They can often be seen using our track, so... Any questions? Please come out and see us, and go for a walk. Four times around is a mile.
Good evening. My name is Shakita Miller. I am a parent of a fifth grader at Mount Holly, and I've had the opportunity to work with the School Improvement Council for approximately four years. So one additional program that we did that links to our track program is a fun run. So we established our fun run in the spring of 2016. Initially, we wanted this to be an extension of the track fundraising. We wanted to encourage students to kind of help in developing the second phase of our project, but we found that the children had so much fun just doing the fun run that we would make this an annual event and find donors in the community to help us to sponsor it. So that's what we've done over the last two years. And as you can see, our students have a great time when they are participating in our fun run, and the goal of it is for them to have fun, and we want to continue our Healthy Lifestyles initiative and encourage students to continue to be active, and since, especially since research shows that healthy students have improved academic outcomes. So the great part about Fun Run to us is the fact that it models what the CDC calls a whole-school, whole-community, whole-child model. The Fun Run Project, or Mustangs on the Move, embodies all of these elements. The project supports the community and is supported by the community. We have businesses as well as churches and other nonprofit organizations that help to sponsor the T-shirts. I'm sporting one tonight, and each child gets a T-shirt as well as they get healthy snacks during their hour or so that they're out participating in the fun run. We also have parents that come out, and the first lap around, typically, the parents can stay with their child, but by the second one, the children are gone. So, but it's such a great opportunity to see how the community comes together in helping to support our students. So we're really impressed by what the Fun Run has become, and we continue, want to continue to make this an annual event for our students.
Good evening. My name's Amy Vaughn. Sorry, I probably don't need this mic. I talk really loud, so. I'm a mom to a third grader at Mount Holly. Addition to that, I am the chairperson for our SIC. So tonight, I'm going to talk about our inspirational and motivational projects that we do, that we always do, and that we will continue to do. The projects we've completed thus far, they align with our school improvement plan along with the health and wellness goals that we have for our school and aligns with the district as well. Some of the examples of our motivational, inspirational projects include stress balls, and on separate occasions, we provided our students with, sorry, I'm looking at this malware block, provided our students with dog tag necklaces. Both of those instances, there were inspirational messages or motivational quotes on those pieces of merchandise. Some of those messages were dare to dream or believe you can achieve, and my personal favorite, which is never, never, never quit. Another example is on this presentation. What you're looking at here is a sample of magnets that we printed and we issued to all of our students and teachers at Mount Holly, and we've done this a couple of times. So again, you know, you can see by the messages, nothing is impossible, the word itself says impossible. No one is perfect. That's why pencils have erasers. Those are just some of the examples. The one last example that ties to the postcards that you have in front of you, those were on your desk when you arrived today. We wanted to provide that with you or to you so that you can see and live through what our children go through when those types of messages are on their desk when they come in first thing in the morning. How those come to be, you can see the cards that are on the presentation. This year, that is what we utilize. Our specials teachers provide characteristic traits of every one of our students, and our volunteers then take those traits, and they provide a quote or an inspirational message that is tied specific to those characteristic traits. Again, the students come in first thing in the morning, and those are on their desk. We've done this a couple of times. One of the other examples was, were post-it notes. We just took post-its, and we wrote those same messages and quotes on those post-its, and we have tied that typically around dates of testing, you know, and that's intentional. We want that motivation, we want that, that promotion, especially during, during that time so that they can focus. So in your seats, again, you, you have those cards with those personalized messages, and just to let you know, those were created based on the feedback that your peers provided to us. So we, we wanted to show you exactly how that goes and what those look like. On the presentation, you'll find feedback from the teachers. You can see that it's lots of caps and lots of exclamation points. In addition to that, I personally have been approached by several parents who talked about how much this meant to them. Even students that had gone on to middle school still have those post-its and good feedback on the cards. We get the requests to do this. So going back to what I started with, these are some of the things that we do and will continue to do. All of the projects we've done thus far and will continue to complete are proof that even the smallest actions and gestures have tremendous impact, not only to the goals we've set, but also to the lives of our teachers and children. And that's all I have. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, any questions for me before I turn it back over to Ms. Warmuth? Okay?
Just, just a comment. Doesn't this not make you just feel warm and fuzzy?
It, it just puts a big old smile on my heart. I'm sorry, I think it's great.
I hope you liked your postcard.
Yes, I did. Thank you.
As you can tell, our Mount Holly SIC supports the concept of reaching each child on a personal level. We make our planning decisions with the whole child in mind, and we keep our focus on enriching the lives of all of our students. As we work with our modern learners, a major goal of our School Improvement Council is building positive nurturing relationships with each of our students. Thank you for this opportunity to share our focus and a few of our programs. As the School Improvement Council, we celebrate along with our entire Mount Holly family this year. We are 10 years strong, meeting the needs of all of our students. Thank you.
I really like that some of your students are, are animals. Yeah, but you need to identify what grade you're in. Any, any questions, comments from the board?
No, I'd just like to comment that I am so pleased with this, this wonderful card that you've sent me, and I am just delighted to have the chance to see Pastor Scott again. And I can't think of her married name now, but you know who I'm talking, Ms. Harrison, the former Ms. Harrison. But I'm so glad to have this chance to thank you for the work that you're doing at Mount Holly, and I'm hopeful that one of these days, I'm going to come out and try to walk around the track four times. But I'm so happy to have you here. Please continue to do the good work that you're doing. I'm sure other schools and other SICs will see this, and you will be able to not just have it at Mount Holly, but you'll see your work grow in other schools as, as well. So thank you again for being here.
Jane.
I think Mount Holly must be a good place to come. Is this you?
That's me.
And, and you were able to get up off the floor? I'm going to come walk around your track. Okay? That's good. That's good.
Thank you for blessing our, our students with, with all that you do and, and for blessing me with my card. It's going to be hanging up in, in my office, and I believe it's the Rapture Center that we had, they now have a crow that paints and that recycles. I'm pretty sure it was the Rapture Center. I'll find out for sure for you. It came out to the museum. Y'all will love it, and I've got a video that I'll send you, and I will give you a little painting that they did.
Because they're coming to us in April 25th.
Need to have them bring the crow.
And, and Jane, you've, you've given up on your crows. You don't teach them anything.
I don't know. I'll bring them along.
Mildly.
I'd just like to say thank you to all of you for your passion, your love, and your understanding for children and knowing, and I believe that it takes a village to raise a child. So with that team effort, the children will be fantastic at Mount Holly.
I will thank you again for your patience. Apologize for being late, but you know, it was worth the wait from my part to hear the presentation. It was really good. I appreciate your time in school and your time to, to explain your story to us. It was very well done, and, and we're really appreciative of what you do. Thank you.
I would just like to say that two of my students are here at Mount Holly.
The principal and the fifth grade teacher over there. It's been four-year-old crows.
Next up, we have Activity Bus Runner Request, Winthrop University and the Worthy Boys and Girls Club. It was in your packet. Does anybody have any questions about that? Terry?
Do we have 20 buses?
Yes, it's just for one day. It's a Saturday, we're good. No problem.
We got the drivers covered?
We have the drivers covered. Actually, it'll be a little bit of time for them, so it's a good thing.
We've done this, this is what, like the fifth year we've been doing this?
It's been a long time. Yes, sir. So we, as a district, we recommend that we move forward with this approval, actually with both approvals.
Board have any problem with that being on the consent agenda?
Yep.
All right, it should be on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is B Policies for Second Read. If a board member wants to bring it up, I'll, I'll read it, and then Policy GCR, Non-School Employment of Professional Staff. Policy GDQB, Resignation of Support Staff. Policy GDF, Support Staff Hiring. Policy GCQE and GDQE, Retirement of Staff. Policy GCQE, Retirement of Professional Staff for Elimination. Policy GDQE, Retirement of Support Staff for Elimination. All right, we have another one for Second Read, Policy GCQA and GCQB, Professional Staff Reduction in Force. All right, then we have G Policies for First Read. Policy GDBC and Administrative Rule, Support Staff Supplementary Pay Overtime. Next one is Policy GBEBD and Administrative Rule, Acceptable Use Policy. I've got some comments on that one. And in a district where we, where we were relying on technology, the statement in the, I guess it's third paragraph, access to the network, internet, email, and other technological services is a privilege, not a right. I'm not so sure that's true anymore in this district. When you're, when you're doing instruction, using technology, what you're doing is denying instruction to, let's say, this is a, so I, I, I think, you know, first of all, I'm not so sure that statement adds anything to the policy, but I'm not sure it's really true. This isn't...
Okay, thank you.
I would agree with what you're saying.
That the policy, the way it's written, is probably a little outdated considering where we're at right now.
Aren't we on page one of the draft?
Policy GBEBD, and its purpose is the first, and then technology, and then access to network. It doesn't add anything to the policy, and I don't think it's true anymore. I think it, it's a, it's a requirement of working in our district and being a student in the district, and, and so I don't necessarily would think we should say that, but I don't think we should say it's a privilege.
Okay.
And, and perhaps we take out with this priv, take all that out and with this privilege and then just have there is a responsibility to use technologies and continue on.
Yes, I would agree with that.
Okay.
And then the, the next paragraph down, the last sentence, says denial of further access to the technologies. I would say, including but not limited to termination or removal from the regular school setting, because if you're in the school setting, you're going to have to be use technology. So I would, I would recommend striking out denial of further access to the technologies. If you're in that position, then you really need to be terminated, I mean, the way we, we rely on technology. Then on administrative rule, the first sentence is, I, I would make administrative rule read the same way as the policy. I have a question on page four of the rule. Under permitted uses, it mentions large files should be downloaded during off-peak hours whenever possible. Is that still true with our systems in place? Now, I know it was true in the early days. Is that still true?
It still could be true. You can do multiple frames.
Then we, then we need to list when those off-peak hours are. I mean, it needs to say during, during the off-peak hours of blank to blank, and of course, the assumption is it's sometime when, when somebody's working at school. Would make sense to make it from midnight to six in the morning, and nobody's there. So it has to be sometime during school hours to be considered off-peak.
Maybe better to define peak instead of off-peak. That's probably smarter.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it, you're, you're right, but if peak happens to be the whole school day when people are working, then effectively, you can't download anything. And if that's the case, then we all say you can't download anything. I just, it just needs to be clarified.
We'll clarify.
And then, is this still true? Users recheck their email frequently and delete unwanted messages promptly. Be aware that the system administrator may delete email at any time. Is that still a true statement? That you need to delete unwanted mess, I mean, because there's...
Yeah, there could be some, some...
Well, I'll ask Mr. James to come up. We collaborated since it's a personnel policy that involves technology, so I'm looking at him because he's a technology person.
And so my follow-up question is, why do we even give employees an email address? You get, there's plenty of free email addresses out there. We don't give employees telephone numbers, and, and in this day and time, why don't we just make it a requirement of employment, they have to supply an email address, and we can eliminate that altogether?
The reason we need to supply the email addresses so that we can manage them in our, in IT, because they're, they're sending files that could be sensitive files, and if, if it's their own email address, I, I can't, I mean, I have no control over that.
So then, you need to say that you cannot use anything but district-supplied email while you're at work, because, you know...
Or for work purposes. A person could, during a planning period or whatever, see their personal email, but we don't want them to use it. Another issue is there are times that we have to, we have to ask Mr. James to, to go get us specific emails in matters that, with students or with employees, so he's got to have control to be able to produce emails, and if we didn't have district-owned email, he would not be able to do that.
He would be liable if he decided to...
I, I would also argue that it signals a certain level of professionalism when you have a, as, as an educator, when you actually have an email address communicating with, with parents, because then you go into a different issue, and that is, what's an appropriate email address, y, y, you know? Yeah, so, so I, I think sticking with the district email address is probably a good thing.
I think so, too.
Then the last bullet... Then the last bullet says users will subscribe only to high-quality discussion groups. We have a list of high-quality discussion groups?
We do not have a list, but the intention for that is that they're not subscribing to anything other than educational discussion groups using work email or work computer.
That's what we ought to say, because the way it's worded now means nothing.
It does say relevant to their educational professional career development, if I'm looking at the right bullet.
Yeah, but high quality doesn't say anything. Unless you can define high quality, then what you need is just educational professional purposes and leave high quality out.
We can reword that.
Then the thing about the district supplied email, you know, and I know District Communications that we have an awful lot of district employees that use their district email for non-school functions. And I know why it's there, but how do you police that?
We do not attempt to police it, but when it comes to our attention, we have to address it.
Torsten, I got you.
Not necessarily. I think in every employee handbook, we have this acceptable use policy. So if we find out that there's a violation, we address the violation, but we don't go searching for violations.
If you don't police it, I mean, the district, if we have an employee who uses the email address for political purposes, and we can't document that we're policing that, then we're liable. I'm not saying to take it, I'm just saying that that's another reason. And I understand Helena's thing, but we have, as far as communications, we've got a management system that they can communicate with parents. You don't have to use the email address. A learning management system. And so I'm just saying to, I understand why these things are here, but some of these things are impossible to manage and it...
But I think what's important is that if somebody does feel like there's a concern, we do have a means by which Mr. James and his team can go find it and then it's produced. If we didn't, we have to have policy to, I mean, employees are responsible for knowing the policy. You're right, there is no way we could police every email, but when an issue occurs and we ask the employee, then Mr. James can go search and has had to do that on some occasions, every email with a certain subject, and we have had to produce those. So we've got to be able to do that.
But someone who's normally doing something they're not supposed to do or not going to be using the district system.
That's what we hope. That's what we hope, because then they won't use our system for that.
The last thing I've got is on the last page under other, the number two, says, given the rapid change in technology, some of the technical standards outlined in this regulation may require some change throughout the year. Is it talking about this document? Because it says such changes will be made with approval of the superintendent. And if it's in this document, superintendent still needs to pass it by the board.
And that would be the intention. If there's a significant change, we would have to bring the policy back for revision.
Any change, you've got to be...
So would you say with approval of the board and the board of trustees, superintendent and the board of trustees?
That's all I've got. Most of them are just questions. Anybody else? All right, thank you. Next up is policy GCC and GCD, staff leaves and absences. Next up is policy GDC and GDD, support staff leaves and absences eliminate. Next up is model policy JIJ, student protest, demonstrations and strikes. Only comment I have is in the second paragraph under district response. Who do we want to list? It says, because student safety is paramount in every situation, the blank may seek support and assistance from the school resource officer and/or local law enforcement as appropriate. Their suggestions are superintendent, building-level administrator, et cetera.
Wouldn't it make sense to do superintendent or his or her designate, since we have that consistency pretty much throughout our entire policy handbook?
I agree.
I'm good with that. So it'd be superintendent and his or...
It'll be superintendent or his or her designate.
All right. Is everybody good with the first group of G policies to go to for second read and then the few we just went for first read as action items?
Yes.
All right. Next up is construction, quarter three update.
Good evening again. So tonight, we would like to update you all on the third quarter construction update program, the Build on the Rock. And we have some pictures. I think you all have been sent the packet in your, in your package, but let's kind of take a look. This is phase two at Ebenezer Avenue. Remember, we walked Ebenezer, the new Montessori School, which we have pictured of in just a minute, not long ago. This is the second phase. There's going to be bathrooms added and there's also the existing office that was at Ebenezer is now being turned into classrooms. This work will be completed before school starts in 18. So here is the new Montessori School with LS3P being the architects and beam construction. I know everybody has walked this building. We have kids in there. Everybody seems to be extremely happy. Playground's installed, so things are moving along extremely well there. And I have to say, just to Ebenezer and DeSivio Circle, patience was wonderful. They did a phenomenal job of being patient with us and making sure that the move-in was smooth. So our new Cherry Park Elementary School, it has here that our anticipated finish is sometime in September. We're going to say sometime in the fall. Remember, we came to the board with recommendations to open the school January 7th, unfortunately, but we want to make sure that the building is ready. We want to make sure that everything is complete. We want to make sure furniture's there. Everything is exact when our kids come in January. So we're very excited about that. This was a couple of weeks before spring break, Grant, with JM Cove, actually took the drone pictures. And this is Mosley Architects and Beam Construction. Here is a rendering of what the inside of our new Cherry Park Language Immersion School will look like. So you can see that not only the classrooms will be instruction, but also the hallways will be instruction. And it's going to be an absolutely beautiful school. And if you've ridden by there lately, a significant amount of work has transpired in the last month. So there's brick on the outside and it's coming together.
The rain shouldn't stop the work.
That's exactly right. Yes, ma'am. And here is an example of what one of the classrooms will look like. And take a look at our furniture. Remember, we have been dealing with VS furniture. The furniture that is easily movable, the furniture, I mean, the stools as well as the chairs are stackable, easy to maintain and easy to, actually with Mr. Cox also, easy to move out of the way to clean, but also easy for the teacher to set up in any way that he or she may like. Here is an example of the hallway, F Hall at Sullivan now. This will be our fourth, this is an example of where our fourth and fifth graders will be coming into the new school. This work has been completed. So we had, remember, we had talked about the possibilities of moving two different groups, and we decided that it was the best recommendation to move everybody on January 7th. So these classrooms are ready. They've been painted. I know Mr. James has done some work in there. New ceiling tile, new tile, looks great. So this is actually ready now. And this gives Shane a little bit of options for swing space.
The classrooms for the fourth and fifth grade, are they, what kind of retrofit are we doing to make those fourth and fifth grade classrooms?
So new technology and just more so painting, ceiling tiles, that kind of stuff, and then doing some internal work with Mr. Manus to make sure that those rooms are what he needs. Right, right. New baseball building, fieldhouse has been opened at Northwestern High School. Beautiful building overlooking the baseball field. They actually had a tournament there this weekend and were able to use the building. Rock Hill High School and Northwestern High School Package 3s, two different examples. The one on the left is Rock Hill High School, new restrooms. The one on the right dictates that or shows that we're putting air conditioning in the old gyms. So finally, we'll have some air in those two buildings. But that work is being taken care of right now by Leitner Construction with both sites, and they are anticipating being finished the end of this month. New Sunset Park Center for Accelerated Studies, this is phased one, which will be completed before school starts. It is completely demoed, as you can see in the bottom-left corner, but the top picture shows what the new building will look like in the future. Lot of work taking place at Sunset, and I have to say again, patience has been wonderful, just like it. All our other schools in Rock Hill High, Northwestern and South Point. Speaking of South Point, this is, picture's a little bit different than what you have in your package, because what the picture you had, it says that this is the work that should take place over spring break. This is the picture of what actually took place over spring break. So we actually painted walls, removed lockers, put in seating and TVs and charging station for students to utilize in the hallways. And of course, this beautiful building, which I hope y'all are enjoying. We have thoroughly enjoyed it. Looking forward to many, many years in this building. But as just a reminder to the public, this was not part of the 2015 bond. Upcoming projects, Northwestern, Rock Hill High restroom renovations and A, B and C buildings, five elementary school restroom renovations, South Point High School athletic renovations, Northwestern and Rock Hill High Welcome Centers, which I'm sure at some point in time, we will come back to the board and discuss. But that is some safety and security concerns there that we will be discussing with the board at a later time. Other projects that are underway, kind of some larger projects, Oakdale, Rosewood, Northside and Richmond Drive, they are either being approved by OSF now or the drawings are being updated. At Oakdale, we will have a new freestanding building. At Northside, we will have a freestanding building also. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
The Northwestern and Rock Hill High Welcome Centers?
Yes, ma'am.
What's a welcome center about?
That is going to be, and we will come back to the board with some examples and some pictures of what it's exactly going to look like. But it's another safety and security measure to make sure that all of our public, when they come onto those campuses, are funneled into one particular space.
I think it would be great for us to see some renderings, just because I think all of us have gotten a lot of questions about those specific ones.
And we totally agree. So we would be more than happy to do that. Example of what our summer 2018 construction schedule will look like. And then, as always, Mr. Frost has done a wonderful job of keeping our Build on the Rock website updated with updated pictures and information. Any questions? Lot going on in the district. All right, thank you.
Ms. Smith. Budget timeline update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
In your packet this evening, you have a calendar for the fiscal year 2018, 2019 general fund budget. The Senate Finance Committee held their budget deliberations the last week of March, and they finished those on March 29th. So last week, districts received information on their recommendations. So that information from the Senate Finance will be provided to the board in this week's hotline. Senate was on furrow last week and they returned today to begin debating the budget. Finance is going to begin working on the, on our budget based on the Senate version of the budget. Crossover deadline is tomorrow for bills to be passed to the Senate. And they will also be debating, Senate will also finish debating their budget this week as well. And so for next week, the Senate will be returning the budget back to the House. April 24th and 26th, the Conference Committee will be holding their meetings to finalize the state budget. And the budget will then be delivered to the governor the first week of May. May 8th through May 18th, the district will be holding our school and community budget meetings. This will be similar to what we did last year. Starting May 8th, legislatures will take up the governor vetoes. And the last day for the legislative session is scheduled for May 10th. At the May 14th work session, we will have a general fund budget discussion. And after this meeting, finance will be finalizing the budget for our public hearing. The public hearing notice will be advertised in the newspaper on either May 24th or the 25th. And the general fund budget presentation for that public hearing will be held on the June 11th work session, and the budget will be presented for the board approval at the June 25th business meeting.
Questions? What's your swag in terms of maximum tax increase? We're going to be able to fund everything?
I do not believe that we will. I mean, I'm just, I'll say it. I believe that if we want to continue running the programs that we're currently running, we will have no choice but to increase mileage to the maximum that we can, which is six mils.
Yes, ma'am.
And that includes step increases, cost of living increases?
Yes. I don't think there'll be any cost of living increase. It will, it'll be the, it'll be the state mandated requirements.
All right.
Thank you.
Next up, I got a quick question and then a determined, in light of the fact of our recommendation for drug testing potential new employees, do we still want to do a drug testing program for our students? Because if we do, I'm going to suggest we take a 10-minute break, because I've got a lot of questions and comments. If not, we don't need to waste time. And do we want to continue with this drug, random drug testing policy?
I will say one thing. I think that if we are seriously considering holding our students to a higher code of standards than we do our employees, we're probably walking down the wrong path. I will have a very hard time supporting something when we are not able to do the same thing for our employees. That's not fair to children. So my question to your answer would be no.
I have a comment too.
Or continue to try to find successful and unsuccessful articles on the web. There
is not overwhelming evidence that drug testing does anything to change the, I mean, some studies say, some don't. I'm not convinced that we would achieve what we want to achieve with that.
Any other opinions?
Yeah, I've got a friend that does it for a living. And when I told her what we were looking at for a price per test, she could, she pretty much indicated she couldn't even compete with that, because her tests are a little higher. My biggest problem is the price per test right now in our current budget constraints with what we're looking at for next year, which we don't know. As far as testing employees, that is a very slippery slope. It has been tested many times in court and the districts and the companies have lost because it's a violation of personal rights, constitutional rights. Been thrown out.
Yeah, and with reading what it said about the slippery slope with our employees, even though we, yes, it's not activities that they have to participate in and that's how we can get around with being able to test them, I really think that we're going to be opening ourselves up to lawsuits, even if we are in the right, having to fight that. And also at this point with the budget, and I still think that there's unanswered questions and things, I don't think I'm ready to support it at this time.
I have a concern with where the children, students have to sign up, the parents have to give permission. If I'm using drugs, I'm not going to sign up, so you will not have a chance to randomly test me. And that's what's some of my concern. And also with, at random, there's a possibility, I know that the child can be tested the next month as well. We talked about testing monthly. So I notice that the child can be tested again, and also concerned about how many will actually sign up. Will it give you a count to say average enough to be able to say to use a drug test?
And Mr. Coates, what it would be is if they, they would have to, if they were playing that sport or driving a vehicle. So if they, if their parent didn't sign, I mean, they wouldn't be able to play or drive. So it wouldn't be that they volunteered once they were an athlete or driving a car, they would be randomly tested.
But see, we're holding that against them, wanting to play sports or wanting to drive a car.
Right.
And they would not sign up for the drug testing. So you're saying, you know, they will not be able to participate in those things.
That's right. That is what the policy would say. That is correct.
Okay, so you're not really giving me a choice. I really want to play sports, so, or I want to drive my car, so I don't have any other choice but to sign up.
That's right.
No choice is that you won't use drugs.
I don't know, but if I'm using it.
That's a choice, you don't want to do it.
Yeah. So I'm, I, those are questions, concerns that, you know, I have, and I see where the, if they positive first time and come back and be positive next time, and the third time, and different things like that continually, but that's my spiel on it.
We can spend a lot of time discussing. It sounds like the board feedback is about the same as a lot of the survey, it's just middle of the road. I'm going to suggest that we let this drop for the time being, for a lot of, from multiple Does anybody have a strong disagreement?
No, I think it's a good choice, and I also have some concerns about.
We just heard something about the budget and how very, very tight.
All right, we'll remove that.
What policy do we have in place now?
They can.
Yeah, we have something in place now, yeah. And what's in place is if they suspect a student of the influence, they can have them tested.
That'll work. That does apply to employees, too.
It applies to every student.
Yeah.
That does. All right, next up is graduation recommendations.
Each June, we have the opportunity to host and witness the graduation ceremonies for each of our high schools, which is always an exciting time for our graduates and their families, school and district staff members, U.S. Board of Trustees, and the broader community as well. Over the course of the past year, our high school principals have facilitated conversations and reflection about graduation ceremonies. They have approached these conversations with a mindset of continuous improvement, seeking ways to make our ceremonies as successful and rewarding as possible for our graduates. In addition to talking with principals in other districts, the principals have engaged members of their school improvement councils in this conversation to identify strengths and areas for future improvement for our graduation events. Dr. Pugh has also had discussion on the topic with her student advisory committee, which includes representatives from each of our high schools. Mr. Kevin Rinn, Chief of Rock Hill School District Safety and Security, had discussions with both Winthrop University Security and local law enforcement regarding their observations and insights. And from these discussions, each group has noted strengths of the graduation ceremonies, which include the level of attendance, the overall safety and efficiency of the events, and the spirit of the celebration. It is the topic of celebration that is the key concern that exists for our ceremonies. The ceremony being that the excessive celebration by a few, four individual graduates can, can at times, take away from the recognition of each individual and cause distractions and disruptions, which can sometimes negatively impact the overall dignity of the event. So I want to provide you with an update regarding these conversations and to highlight the new strategies that are detailed in the memo you received in your board packet. We believe these discussions have yielded some additional strategies and will have a positive impact and hopefully minimize disruptions. We have sought to increase the student voice and perspective on this topic, as it is their day and it is their celebration. So as you'll see in your memo, some of the things that have been collaborated with from each of the groups that I mentioned, continue the previous efforts in the area of advanced communication with all stakeholders. Our principals have currently, have in the past included this information in their letters that they've sent home to graduates. They've included it on the tickets, they've included it in the information that's sent to the newspaper. Number two, have students from each of our three high schools create a graduation public service announcement that would be taken care of by our ATC multimedia program, to be aired on the Jumbotron as students enter the Colosseum to talk about what they wish the behavior expectations for the ceremony are to be. Have our student speakers remind attendees of behavior they expect. Utilize strategies for calling student names, such as allowing appropriate wait time, pausing before calling the next student name if disruption occurs, practicing student names to ensure correct pronunciation. Each school will have additional conversation regarding ways to recognize student individual achievements. And finally, maintain the safety and orderliness through our partnership with local law enforcement for monitoring. It is not the goal of anyone, not our school district, not law enforcement, to arrest anyone, it is just simply to monitor and maintain the safety. Our goal is all the same, which is to achieve a balance between the events being both celebratory and dignified. If you have any additional suggestions, we certainly are receptive to those, any comments or questions. And I wish to thank our three high school principals who are here with us this evening, who've been leaders on this topic for over the past year, as we try and make sure that we have the best ceremony possible for our students.
I'd just make one comment. Mr. Hall, who was your student speaker that spoke last, last year? She did the best, it was either the student body president or student class president, I'm not sure which. She did the best job of getting control of that auditorium. I mean, and she just took over, and I was really impressed that her crowd.
Did you some training?
Well, I, I, I think you should get just a little video to show these student speakers. If anybody gets out of line, do what she did.
Yeah. Well, and I want to thank Dr. Cook and our high school principals, Mr. Rinn. There was a lot of time spent trying to talk with students, with law, different groups to really come up with some suggestions and thoughts. And the kids said during student advisory, we want our names pronounced correctly. So that's why that's on here, because they all know the correct pronunciation, and if we don't pronounce them correctly, then kids, people laugh. So I think that you all did a very good job of trying to get input, and I think our kids can have the greatest impact if a student is saying, please respect our graduation. So I do hope some of those new strategies will help us.
How, how are you going to do practicing the names?
I mean, I thought that was already happening.
They do, but there's going to be an increased emphasis on that to make sure and talk further with students, and those name callers will have additional time. They already participated in their practice ceremonies, so the intent is for them to go through it more specifically and be very intentional about it being pronounced correctly.
And sometimes, y'all know, that can, I used to do that. That can be really tough.
Right.
Because, you know, some of our kids have hard names, and if you don't work with them on a regular basis, then you may not.
I can remember writing out for terrific kids, you know, phonetic pronunciations for some of our kids, for the Kuanis or Hoover boys who came, so.
But I will also say, as somebody who graduated with a rather complicated last name, it's not that much fun when you cross the straight, stage, and what they call is not even close to what your real name is.
Right.
I mean, it just takes away a little bit of it.
Yeah.
I was Miss Brinkscotch at that point, and that was not my last name. So yes. At the time, I was bringing a school, and they called me Miss Brinkscotch. Yeah, that was awesome.
You mean, even the Swedes couldn't pronounce?
No, this was, this was college here in the U.S.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah. Yeah.
They couldn't pronounce?
No, they could not.
Wendy.
I appreciate all of the time that y'all have put into coming up with all of these strategies. One other thing that I noticed at some of the graduations last year are big banners. And then I heard some complaints from parents who were sitting behind these big banners that then they didn't get to see, because it was one thing, they hung them up, but some of them were holding them up, you know, like through the whole thing, and.
Okay, thank you.
The other, the other feedback that I got, that I don't know if some students have missed the information, or if it was just not clearly communicated. I don't remember which school it was, but some colleges send out stickers or something or another that you're supposed to put on top of your cap. And a couple of students did that, and there was some issues with that, and I know that we don't allow it, but I don't know that that necessarily was clearly communicated to students. So, and I know that this is the time of year where a lot of kids get their acceptance letters, and a lot of them end up getting these things, because, you know, they want the social media pictures of, hi, I'm a so-and-so, you know, but maybe reminding kids that, yay, great for you that you got into college, however, we don't need it displayed during graduation, so.
All right. Yes?
I'd like to, I'd like to compliment our three high school principals for the outstanding graduation ceremonies that we have had in the past. I have been so impressed with the attention that has been given. Many of these students, when they walk down that aisle for the very first time, and their parents as well, have a sense of pride that permeates the whole building. Everybody in there feels prideful when I see them walking down. I'd like to suggest, though, that when they walk down their aisle, that they should turn and face the audience. When, when a, like the group that comes in first, we should turn and face backwards instead of facing forward, because the only persons sitting on the stage are the, are us. But as long as you can turn and look and see who's there, and I think that would help with, you can see if your parents, where they're sitting and all of that. I'd like, I'd like to suggest that maybe you can practice it and see if it works. But I, I'm very pleased with what you're already doing. If you'd like to change that, that would be good. And I am, I would give the students a chance to decorate the top of their caps, if they wanted to do that. I don't see anything wrong with it. I think it would be fine.
I believe we have given that authority to the superintendent to come to those decisions.
It depends on what they put on that.
Thank you. Thank you. On, looking at the calendar coming up over the next week or week and a half, this Thursday, Helena is going to be in Columbia with the legislators. Is anybody else going? Friday, we get community visits, Richmond Drive, Evanport. Monday, we have our board retreat, 8:30 to 2:00 p.m. here, here in the central office. On the 18th, the mayor is reactivating Rock Hill Reeds, be it City Hall. On the 19th, it's Thursday, we've got community visits, which is not on Friday, just.
It is on Thursday.
It's on Thursday, yeah.
Because they're not, they don't have kids on Fridays, right?
The other, the Flex, we're going to Flex, too, and they don't have students on Friday, so that visits on Thursday. On the 20th, the number one question, we'll have a meeting here at the central office, and it's to watch a film, and I take it it's on mindful, it's related to mindfulness, and that'll be here at the district office. Then on the 23rd, York County Regional Chamber Legislative Luncheon, and then, of course, we have our business meeting that afternoon. So I just wanted to cover those, see now and then. Is, are there any items for future business board members would like to have?
Just a reminder to, I guess, us and everybody else, that kindergarten event will be this Saturday, I believe, is at nine o'clock to two o'clock, and it will be here at the new district office.
Nine to 12.
Nine to 12, where brand-new kindergarten parents can come and sign up their little babies. And it's a, it's a fun event. I'm going to go just to see some kindergartners. Mr. Q.
I think it's my son. He has Special Olympics this Friday, right? At Manchester.
Special Olympics this Friday? Is anybody know? I'm not aware of that.
Yeah, so, Nathan, the Herald is going to be at Manchester.
Anybody else? We've used up all our executive session items, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Moved by Mildred Douglas, seconded by Jane Sharp. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Seven zero, we stand adjourned.